That's why it was worth.
Business meeting.
It is, I think, in.
It makes sense.
It's green.
Yeah, okay. Will counsel come to order and will the clerk please call the roll?
Anderson?
Present.
Oliver?
Here.
Ford?
Here.
Edgar Smith?
Here.
Mattingly?
Here.
Sutton?
Here.
Watson?
Present.
We will begin this evening with the vice mayor leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will move on now to our consent agenda, and I'll begin by saying that tonight there is a modification to the consent agenda that was previously published, item B, and that is ordinance 2061a, 2061b, and also C. We'll postpone those for about a month. Starting with A, town council minutes of October 8 and October 22, our action there will be to approve them. Item C is ordinance 2067, amending Chapter 5 of the town code pertaining to animals and foul by repealing Section 5-105 and amending Sections 5-107 and 5-200. We're going to introduce that ordinance and we're scheduling the public hearing for December 10. We have a resolution 11A24 honoring Tina King. We'll adopt that this evening, and I'd like to read it in a short while here. We have a Blacksburg Transit Strategic Plan. We're adopting that this evening. We have a contract for professional surveying services for Town Corporate Limits Survey. We'll approve that. And at 414 North Main Street, a Declaration of Restrictive Covenant, DEQ remediation process. We're going to authorize the town manager to sign that. And at this time, I'd like to read the Tina King Resolution. Shall we get Tina up here? Yeah, seems a good idea. Our last opportunity to embarrass you, Tina. We don't need the.
This should pick you up.
Yeah, okay. This is a resolution honoring Tina King, whereas Tina King has served the town of Blacksburg and the New River Valley for decades through her work with the Agency on Aging. Whereas Tina came to the New River Valley in 1981 and started her career with the agency by working in the in-home services program and was promoted shortly thereafter to manage nutrient, nutrition, wait, nutrition programs in the community, whereas Tina worked to help develop and improve programs and services, including the health insurance counseling program, the long-term care program, and legal services. Whereas Tina was promoted to Executive Director of the Agency in 2007. Whereas Tina's foresight and determination have earned the agency the prestigious state-level award for best practices three times. This award identifies programs that meet an identified need and that are replicable for other agencies to institute. And whereas Tina has decided to retire after serving for 41 years that were marked by her exemplary dedication that has helped enhance our community, now therefore be it resolved that the Blacksburg Town Council hereby expresses its appreciation of Tina King for her devotion to our community, her hallmark characteristics as a devoted leader, and her untiring commitment to the town's quality of life. Thank you all very much. I'm not even asking for money tonight, I'm nervous, but I just wanted to thank you all as I do leave my position after so many years. And you all know that as town council members and as those in administration of the town, that it takes a strong team to do the hard work. And that's what I've really enjoyed having over the past forty-something years, our strong teams between employees and board members and advisory council members, local governments, and many organizations and agencies. I felt so very fortunate to have all of that, and I will miss you, even though I didn't like coming to ask for money. But I will miss you, and I do plan to stay active in the community and wish you all the best in your endeavors. Thank you so much. Your Tina. We will move on now. Oh, yes, we do. We need, yeah, we need a resolution on the consent agenda.
I move approval of the modified consent agenda without item B.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Edgar Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutton?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Thank you. Now we will move on to public hearings. And before we do, well, I'll read this later. We're moving on to public hearings, and the first is ordinance 2030, amending town code Section 17-400 and adding a new section, 17402, to authorize charges for the use of emergency medical services vehicles.
And rescue chief David English will have the staff presentation.
Good evening. My name is Dave English. I'm the chief of the Blacksburg Volunteer Rescue Squad, and so I'll be presenting this. But as I'm up here, Larry did a lot of the backend work on it, so please feel free to jump in anything that I miss or that needs clarification. Yeah, so ordinance 2030 is essentially just looking to amend the existing town code to allow what we're calling EMS revenue recovery. And so with that, EMS revenue recovery program is essentially a way of trying to reimburse some of the costs that go into providing that service. Medicaid, Medicare, and most health insurance plans already have coverage to allow, you know, funding to go towards the ambulance ride essentially. And so we're trying to leverage that instead of keep having to come back to you to ask for more money as things keep getting more expensive. So that's the overall, what we're looking at. Why it's necessary, you know, as we've all seen over the past 10 years, we've gotten busier and busier, 40% increase just in the last 10 years, and this year is looking to set yet another record, and it's not a record that we try to set because that means more people are getting hurt or getting sick, but as population increases, that's just kind of comes with the territory. So we've also greatly increased the level and scope of services that we can provide over the last several years. Most notably, we started in the past year a critical care program, which is basically the highest level of pre-hospital medical care that anybody can get, and not a lot of localities offer that level of service. And so we've implemented that. We're having to switch due to some federal changes, having our own in-house pharmacy program, which is a bit expensive as well. And then also, unlike most EMS agencies, we also provide a lot of these technical rescue services such as wilderness search and rescue and cave rescue and water rescue and things like that. So to be able to do all that, that definitely has a cost. And then we've also seen a pretty steep level of inflation, especially since COVID. Ambulance costs have almost doubled just in about four years, and there's production delays as well. So today, if we ordered a new ambulance, it would take three years before we saw it. So we're trying to get ahead of all of that and figure out ways to recoup some of those costs. So some of the biggest questions, and I think the most important questions for you all and for our residents is, first off, will a resident be billed for EMS transport? Because essentially, in the name, that sounds like what we're talking about, but really the answer is no. We're looking at billing insurance companies who already have that coverage. And so no resident of Montgomery County, including the towns, including students, pretty much anyone that identifies as residing within Montgomery County, they would not individually receive a bill. We would bill their insurance if they had insurance. And so no resident would be expected to have any out-of-pocket expenses, whether it's a copay or if they don't have insurance paying it all. We did have to tweak what we were looking at initially when we started to look into some of the legal aspects of this. And so unfortunately, we can't have that same blanket waiver of all fees for non-residents. Basically, for residents, we're allowed to consider the taxes that they pay in to the localities as offsetting those copays, but where non-residents don't, we can't do that. So we do still have to send them a bill. The way that they are gone after is up to us, and that's why we want to be as soft a billing as legally possible. But that's kind of why everything is being routed through Larry to make sure that we're doing as much as we can with that while still not crossing a line that we can't. We did also start collecting data on this because that was one of the big questions was who would get a bill versus who wouldn't, and we found that currently, I believe the number is 92% of our transports this year were, would be considered residents. And so none of those would get any kind of bill. It would just be that approximately 8% of people coming in from out of town and visiting. So how would it work? Essentially, from the user end or from the patient end, somebody that needs our service, really, we wouldn't want to see much of anything change. So they would still call EMS as they normally would, and I think the most important thing of all of this is that no one would ever be denied services, whether it's treatment or transport, based on their ability to pay or their insurance. And in fact, we're not even really asking about that stuff when we go to see them. So when we show up, we're not asking for their insurance card. We're just taking care of them, getting them where they need to be, and then the hospitals collect all of that information, and so we would work with the hospitals. And really, the only difference from the patient's standpoint is that we would explain that to them during the trip if they were able to understand that. So the patient would be transported to the hospital, the insurance information is collected from the hospitals, and then, you know, if the patient is not transported, because this is really just revenue recovery for the transports, so if they're not being transported, then there would be no bill to them or to insurance at all. So Blacksburg would be billing through Montgomery County's third-party vendor, which is EMSMC. EMSMC would work with the hospitals to collect that insurance information, and then they would distribute whatever funds were collected back to Montgomery County since everything's kind of working under their program. From there, any of the transports of patients that happened within the town limits would then be transferred from the county to the town, and it would be put in a designated account that's specifically for rescue operations and capital projects and things like that. So some of the other common questions we get is who has insurance? It's really difficult to really iron out that answer because it is constantly changing, but this is the information we got when we first started looking into this about two years ago with the local hospital. And so essentially, almost everyone here has some sort of insurance coverage already. That charity care, which is 1%, is essentially the same as the percent that that hospital is seeing that doesn't have any form of insurance. We know that that'll be slightly different with us, but that's kind of a good idea to get a starting point from because most of our patients get transported to that hospital. So who else is doing that? That's another question. We don't want to just jump into this blindly. And so just locally, the town of Christiansburg has been doing almost identical program for over a decade. Montgomery County started doing this roughly about half a year ago, and all of the surrounding jurisdictions have been doing this for quite a while. Roanoke, Salem, Radford, Giles, Pulaski, Floyd, Craig, and you can expand that out as far as you want. This has pretty much become the standard almost everywhere now, and so we're really one of the last ones to take the step into this type of program. Will this replace the operating budget or the capital budget for rescue? In general, no. Typically, it's intended to offset those costs, not to completely cover them. Now, how much it covers just depends on so many factors, and it's really hard to guess ahead of time how much would be brought in, and then based on that, how much would actually offset. But looking around Virginia, they estimate roughly about 40% of an agency's budget is typically covered by this program. I think initially, it might be higher for us, but again, that's a lot of estimations and speculation, so it's really hard to give an exact answer to that question. So ordinance 2030 essentially just authorizes charges for using emergency medical service vehicles, so ambulances, and it establishes the amount of these charges based on the type of transport. And really, this is all kind of based on Medicare, and most insurance companies kind of look to that as the structure of what type of charges are allowable, and they base how much they give based on that. So we are looking at using the same rates that the town of Christiansburg and Montgomery County are using. We did that intentionally because we really wanted to try to keep it simple. And also, as you notice, it's based on a percentage of the Medicare rate, and the reason we do that is that then you don't have to hear me come up every year and talk to try to update the ordinance when the federal government changes what those rates are. So by keeping it at a percentage, then that will always update as the federal government updates their rates. And one of the questions that had come up were what are those rates? And I think that's an important question to ask. And so this is the current rate based on CMS, which is the government organization that kind of sets all of those. So on the left column, you see the current Medicare rates, and then the town rates, which would be the same if we adopted this, and the same as what Christiansburg and Montgomery County charge is the column on the right, so that's the 170%. Now, keep in mind, the way insurance companies work, whether we like it or not, essentially, you kind of submit for a certain amount, and then they negotiate down to another amount. And so that's why it's kind of intentionally set at a higher rate than Medicare, knowing that if it's a Medicare patient, ultimately, they don't care what number we give them, they're going to use that left column. But other private insurance companies have a little more leeway, and so they might offer a little more or a little less. And so we kind of set that amount that gets billed out, and then through negotiations with insurance companies and billing and all of those things, that's what ultimately decides how much they would provide. We did have this policy vetted through Page, Wolfburg, and Worth, which is a national EMS law firm, just to get somebody that was more familiar with this from the federal government side to make sure that both the rates and also our practices were in line with the federal regulations and with what they're seeing across the country. So with that, I'm sure there will be questions, so I'll stop talking and let you ask whatever you might. And also, Larry, feel free to add anything I missed.
The ordinance has a delayed effective date of January 1st.
Good point. Excellent. Yeah, so the way it's currently written is this wouldn't go into effect until the start of next year. That way, we have some built-in time to make sure we can get the messaging out and get everybody informed and educated about it.
Are we able to advertise publicly that we won't be going after people who don't have insurance? And by not going after them, I mean aggressively billing them? Or at what point does that constitute insurance fraud? Larry, you might be able to answer that.
We can advertise or publicize where a policy says. We can't make promises about our collections and advertise that. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
So for example, we could, certainly, we want to make some of the points in Dave's presentation about how it's going to work for Montgomery County residents. We want to make that clear to the community. For those who would be not considered a resident, I would just look to the experience of the other localities. You're not hearing concerns about that. You're not hearing stories in the newspaper about people, about high-pressure collection activities.
And just to confirm, Virginia Tech students are considered residents?
Yes.
But that they're on campus or off-campus in the county?
Yeah, the way we've been told is that as long as that's still within the county, then they can be.
I think there was some confusion among students.
There was initially. Yep, yeah, that was definitely a question.
Is that true for students who live outside the county?
My understanding is they have to self-declare as being a resident of Montgomery County. So how they want to determine that, we can try to help guide them, but ultimately, they're going to say whether they're a resident or not. We can very easily say if you're a student and you live on campus, then we know you are. But beyond that, it's kind of just how they come up with that answer for themselves, if that makes sense.
And that's an answer that they would give at the time that they're being served by the ambulance?
Ideally, yeah.
That seems like a tough time to kind of suss out what somebody's residence is.
It does. And usually, it's pretty rare, actually, for that question to even come up. I mean, like we said, it's really only about 8% of our patients are not residents.
Yeah.
And usually, when they're not, it's very clear and obvious that they're not. So we really haven't run into issues yet of not knowing which way to answer that question.
Yeah.
Of course, it could happen. And luckily, there are, you know, backup systems, so if, you know, they're a resident, but they at the time weren't sure and answered that they weren't, the EMSMC, which is the third-party company, actually has a dedicated number that's just for Montgomery County that pulls up all of their policies and their advice and recommendations. And so essentially, if someone got a bill inadvertently because they actually shouldn't have, that can all be fixed with a dedicated support team. So I won't say it's not possible.
Sure, sure.
Because it is, but it's something that as long as we know about it, we can fix.
Sure. I tell you, too, another one of the things, we can go back to that slide with the pie chart on it. That's another one of the things that gives me heartburn there because the charity rate there, that 1% of people at the hospital who are uninsured, the national uninsured rate is like 8.4%, I think a little bit lower in Virginia, maybe closer to 6%. Is it just that we don't have that many uninsured people in Montgomery County, or is it that people who lack insurance are less likely to seek that emergency medical care?
Yeah, so, I mean, again, it's certainly possible, but we really haven't seen that anywhere. For HCA, this is actually, they call it a pay mix, and Lewisville Hospital, Montgomery is actually the best in all of HCA as far as how that mix plays out. And so I think what tends to happen is you have people kind of on the extremes unless in that middle area here where, you know, again, that's just kind of what we see. It certainly could be higher than 1%. I would say 1% is unusually low, which is why we say that it's where the data came from, because most otherwise wouldn't believe that number. But yeah, you know, really, across the country and even in the, you know, in our town next door, they really haven't experienced that or seen that. It's kind of become the standard where everyone assumes that, that, you know, either you've got insurance or you're going to go, and most people tend to already assume that they're going to get an ambulance bill. And so people are actually very surprised, and they'll reach out to us and ask about it every few days, and we have to tell them that, you know, kind of explain it. So it's kind of become that we're the outlier in not doing it.
So that's a nice surprise to have.
It is, yeah.
Does anybody else have questions? Okay, thank you, David.
Thank you.
And we'll move on to public comment. Anyone who would like to speak to ordinance 2030, please come forward, state your name and address.
What up, counsel? My name is Zachary Weiss. I live at 1711 Whipple Drive. Thank you for bringing this to our attention. I looked up the budget for the fire and rescue from 2013 and from 2023, and it's a 52% increase over 10 years. So I'm also concerned about the 1% or 8% or 6% of people that would be covering 40% projected of fire and rescue budget, which is like over $1 million for non-residents. So I'm just, you know, what's that solution? Why is it 170% over Medicaid? I get that it's negotiation, but I think that there needs to be some sort of like grace that's given to non-residents where, I don't know, maybe there's some kind of math that can happen where non-residents are basically being like a client to the fire and rescue team that negotiates or the third-party contractor that negotiates with the insurance companies? I don't know. I just want to know why it's a lot more than expected. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to speak to this, this ordinance 2030? David, would you like to respond now or would you like to chat with Zachary after the meeting? Zachary?
You can answer. I'll come up just in case. Yeah, so it's tough because the real answer to your question, I think, would make you happy, but it's one of those ones that we have to be careful how we word things because there's rules about how we have to attempt to get the funding back, if that makes sense. I think the, ultimately, what most jurisdictions tend to do, even if they are going to more aggressively pursue collections from people, is at the very least, they will have some kind of system in place where that non-resident could request that that number be adjusted for them. Typically, Christiansburg, for example, they have a program where you would submit a hardship waiver essentially that says that you can't afford that, and then they would use that to kind of decide if they could waive. They're all a part of it. I think we are actually looking at being even more generous than that, but we have to be careful how we go about it, if that makes sense. I know that's kind of a workaround to your question. I don't know if Larry can say or be more clear about it. I don't want to say the wrong thing.
No. If Mr. Weiss was curious, you can follow up with him about how it works in practice. But while we have to make some reasonable collection efforts, but there's also how far that we go with those is another matter, and the company as well.
So if you'd like afterwards, I can tell you what Montgomery County is currently doing with it, because ultimately, our plan would be to pull under theirs, and that might help accelerate even more. Did that answer all of the questions, or at least address all of the questions?
Yeah, I think so.
David is, under the leadership of David English, our rescue chief. This has been studied for easily more than a year, so there's a lot of material there, and it probably is a good topic for another conversation. Are we finished with public comment on this ordinance? Okay. What is counsel's pleasure on ordinance 2030?
I move for approval of ordinance 2030.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
I'm sorry, mayor, I think there's time for discussion.
Okay, I thought we'd already discussed it.
No, that was asking questions of the staff. I think it would be an incredible disservice for us to pass this ordinance, a disservice to the people that we represent, particularly for people who are on a limited income or on a fixed income. I think of my own grandparents, you know, grandmother and pawpaw, they can stretch a dollar better than anybody else, and I think if they're in a situation of medical emergency, rightly or wrongly, because they think they might get billed, they may or may not make that emergency medical phone call that they would need to make in order to receive life-saving care. So, you know, to me, it's pretty basic that even if it's unlikely that somebody's going to be getting a bill, even if they think they're going to be charged hundreds and hundreds of $1,200 for a ride to the ER, they're going to be less likely to make that call. And it might not be tomorrow or next week or next month, but eventually... But eventually, there's going to arise a situation where someone who needs life-saving medical care is going to decide not to make that phone call. And, and they may die as a consequence of the decision that we make tonight. And even if, if insurance is likely to cover it all, any of us who have spent hours and hours on the phone with insurance trying to get them to cover the simplest darn thing, they, they, folks are going to worry whether or not they're going to have to do that here too, with their ambulance ride. Expectant mothers in our community who are going to have to take longer drives anyway out, out of the county to, because our local maternity ward has closed, those ambulance bills are going to be even higher in those cases as well. I can't fix the entire healthcare system from this day, but I think we can make choices that keep it from getting worse for folks. And I can't make healthcare less accessible to my constituents, especially those with tight budgets. So I'll certainly be a no.
I have a question based on what you said. Did you not say they will not receive a bill?
Residents.
Residents will not receive a bill. So it's not like they have to negotiate with the insurance carrier. The bill will go to their insurance company, and if they don't have insurance, they don't have to pay. Correct?
Does that satisfy your concerns?
Well, no, I mean, you know, again, thinking about my pawpaw, if he comes to visit my house, he's not a resident of Blacksburg. And if he has a heart attack there in my kitchen, what I worry about is the consequences that would follow that, and the decisions that individuals would make in those situations.
Anyone else?
Well, I just want to thank Liam for expressing his opinion and bringing out this stuff. I think, I think the overriding thing for me, though, is what is possible and what is likely. So what Mr. Watson's talked about is it's possible. I mean, he's, he's definitely, everything that's been talked about is what could happen. But the likelihood that it would happen is pretty slim to none, not, not zero. And, I mean, it seems that, that, you know, we're not leading the vanguard here. We're, we're just trying to be more fiscally responsible. And so I don't have a problem supporting this.
Just to jump in, I'm in favor of this ordinance too. The purpose of the ordinance is to allow the town of Blacksburg to bill insurance providers. It's not to bill residents. It's gone as far as we legally can to prevent individuals from billing, being billed. I know that some visitors to the community could receive bills as well, but the language in the ordinance prevents Blacksburg residents and Montgomery County residents from receiving a bill for copays, deductibles, balances, that sort of thing. So I think that this ordinance is written in a way that it's fiscally responsible, like Jerry was talking about, but also protects our residents to the maximum extent that we possibly can.
Is there any data on, from entities, other jurisdictions who put this into place? And any drop in requests for care? Is there anything out there like that?
Not that anyone has reported. It's hard to say, because the volume is going up anyway. And so it's kind of hard to pick that apart. But in general, like just as our neighbor's jurisdictions are in, in Blacksburg, we're not seeing any decline.
So that's the end of our discussion. I will ask the clerk to please call the roll. Ford?
Aye.
Eggersmith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Sutphen?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Moving on to ordinance 2053, to amend the Blacksburg zoning ordinance to permit residential development on smaller lots in the R4 district by amending zoning ordinance sections 3040, 3041, and 3042, and adding new zoning ordinance sections 3030, whoop, 3043 and 3044, and to amend subdivision ordinance section 107. And we'll begin with, Kenzie O'Shea will give us a staff presentation.
Thank you. The comprehensive plan identifies two specific zoning actions for implementation that point towards smaller lot development as a strategy for expanding housing options within town. To that end, town staff, along with consultant firm Camero's, have been drafting an ordinance that would allow for the byright development of smaller lots than are currently allowed in the zoning ordinance. There are several residential districts in town that support primarily single-family development. The R4 zoning district is the typical single-family residential district for much of the residential areas in town. There are options to reduce lot sizes below the minimum in conjunction with a requirement for additional open space with the open space overlay district. There are a few examples of existing development that has occurred over time with smaller lot sizes. Airport Acres was developed in the 1940s, and many homes are on lots approximately 8,500 to 10,000 square feet. Echo's Village and the Village at Tom's Creek are both planned residential developments with a range of lot sizes. The Village at Tom's Creek also features some attached housing. Nearby in Roanoke, Grandin Village features largely alley-loaded residential blocks with lots around 7,000 square feet. The small lot residential option is a development option proposed within the existing R4 neighborhoods. While it wouldn't require a rezoning to develop under the standards, a minimum development size of two acres is required. This is to ensure that standards are applied thoughtfully across a neighborhood, rather than this being utilized as an infill tool. The proposed development option would allow for single-family uses by right, as well as two-family and town home uses, town home uses by right, provided that they're served by an alley. There are a number of different types of standards for the small lot development option, including standards that govern individual lots, such as setbacks and lot coverage, development standards such as open space and street design, and unit standards, unit design standards that apply to individual dwelling units. There is also an overall lower occupancy standard of a family plus one or no more than two unrelated persons per unit proposed. The map on the screen is a snapshot in time of eligible properties as of September 2024. It should be noted that areas of eligibility can change over time as properties are bought and sold. This diagram illustrates several concepts on a 3,000-square-foot lot, including setbacks, a minimum lot frontage of 30 feet, an allowable porch encroachment of up to five feet into the front setback, and a maximum footprint of the principal structure of 25% of the lot. This illustration demonstrates several concepts with regard to parking and driveways. Driveways or parking areas must be at least 20 feet in length so as not to spill a vehicle over the sidewalk or the street. Front-facing garages must be set back from the face of the building, whether attached or detached. And lastly, garage width is limited relative to the structure width or no more than 22 feet, whichever is less. There was a community meeting held on September the 26th. Postcards were mailed to all property owners within the R4 zoning district. The town's Let's Talk Blacksburg page and calendars also advertised the event. There were a number of attendees who left comments on various boards on display at the meeting. Other public comment has also been received through the town's Let's Talk Blacksburg page, as well as via email. As you can see from the dates on the screen, we've been working for this for over a year, with a referring resolution in November 2023 kicking off the process in earnest. The planning commission heard this at its July 2nd, 2024, public hearing, and voted to recommend approval by a vote of six to zero with one abstention. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Do we have questions for Kenzie?
Kenzie, could you explain the more stringent occupancy requirement relative to what this, what currently exists for R4?
The current standard in R4 is a family plus two unrelated or no more than three unrelated persons. This is a family plus one or no more than two unrelated.
Thank you.
And the design standards are really requiring a small house on a small lot. So we don't anticipate McManions taking over the whole lot and then selling for a million dollars.
Yes, there is a limitation on the structure size proportional to the lot size.
We've had some concerns shared with us from residents that this could cause some bad infill redevelopment in our existing communities. And we talked about that at one of our recent work sessions. But could you share so that the folks here and maybe at home could hear that answer as well?
Yes, so with the, with the minimum development size of two acres as a minimum lot, as a minimum development size, it really sets the stage for being greenfield development as opposed to infill development. Our market today is not conducive to buying up individual lots and, and repurposing them for, for small lot-type development when there are existing homes on them. Our, our market just isn't conducive for that type of development to occur. So with the minimum two-lot acre, two minimum, two-acre lot minimum, I'm sorry, it really does push that towards greenfield development as opposed to infill lot development.
So, so it's just not fiscally possible?
Correct, correct.
You say that that's based on our current market conditions. Is that likely to change over time?
I don't see that changing over time anytime, anytime soon. And, and our folks in the Housing and Community Connections office have been able to confirm that as well.
Gotcha, that would pretty much like require a decrease in property values in order to be...
It would, and, and the, the cost of housing right now is, is so expensive. It's just not affordable to be able to purchase lots and then tear them down.
As a follow-up to that, I mean, back of the envelope, that, that's like eight lots, eight houses, scrape the houses, and then start over.
Right, that's, that's correct. And to be able to get to that two-acre minimum, that's what you're looking at, about eight lots.
It's a lot of money.
Eight times three, $400,000, if they're an extremely modest home. That's a lot of money for real estate.
Yep.
Start over.
Just start over. To build a small house, yes.
I've talked with a couple of folks who are here tonight, as well as with a couple of the citizens that submitted feedback online. There's no mechanism that we have as a town to require these lots or require the homes built on these lots to be below a specific price point. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. And is there, is there a mechanism in other localities that they've been granted by the General Assembly for that? That might be a better question for Larry.
Yeah, that's not something I'm aware of.
Not as part of a subdivision ordinance. You can, there are localities in Northern Virginia that, that can do what's called inclusive zoning, where you require a certain percentage of the development to be set aside. We don't have that authority. So we would, we would not be able to say that, for example, that 10% had to be affordable.
But we'd have to go to the GA to get that authority, is that right?
Yes, and we've dipped our toe in that pond in the past, did not, well, the water was kind of hot, so.
Any other questions?
Just one more about traffic on specifically North Main, where we're likely to see a larger development come in as a result of this ordinance. That would not require a traffic study at that time, right?
It would, so a development, even a byright development does require a traffic study to ensure that there are no impacts that are, that are, that require warrants for improvements.
Outstanding, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we will have public comment. And please come forward if you're interested to speak to this ordinance and state your name and your address.
Hi, my name's Deborah Olson. I live at 402 Lansdowne Street in Blacksburg. And I guess my disappointment with this is that there is not more of a set aside for affordable housing. I think we're assuming implicitly that if we have smaller houses and smaller lots, they will be more affordable. I don't know anything in recent history in town that necessarily supports that hypothesis. And I am concerned, I know Charlottesville, for example, has the same type of law that Northern Virginia do. They are able to do that. I guess I would say that I would like code changes of this sort to include a more precise and mandated requirement that the builders include some form of, of housing for middle and lower-income people. I have heard many people come to this, this forum at different times, and they cannot, they're young people, they want to move into houses, and they're perpetually undermined by, by people who have rental properties, they want to expand, et cetera. I think that the idea of this is good, but more of us would embrace it if I think I felt like we could, if it was a more inclusive package and I was helping, you know, young families and other people in town who really don't have the wherewithal to buy most of the homes that we have here.
Thank you.
If I might, I would just offer that it is possible that a housing developer, probably a developer like Habitat, or more likely, Community Housing Partners, could do a project with this new ordinance where they, where they, as that type of developer, could make it affordable, have affordable elements. So I just want to throw that out there. But if everything the speaker said was correct, that we don't have the ability to compel that.
All right. How, how many, remind me, there's fewer than half a dozen localities in the state of Virginia that have inclusionary zoning?
That's correct.
That are permitted to by the General Assembly.
That's correct, and, and as the speaker mentioned, Charlottesville is the closest one.
I, I think of it as the Mother May I system, the Dillon Rule state. So who else would like to speak under public comment?
My name's Jonas Ivasauskas. I live at 118 Primrose Drive. Block from you. When I moved to Blacksburg 28 years ago, I bought a house on Primrose Drive. There was a farm behind us, growing corn. Further back, there were cows. I knew that eventually it would, it would all be gone and replaced by some sort of development. I knew I couldn't live on the edge of town forever. I did my research. I found that the zoning in this part of town was R4 residential, and I also found that this could not be changed without substantial legal effort. I participated in drafting the Year 2000 Blacksburg Comprehensive Plan. The existing zoning was reviewed, the types of development the residents in town would like to see, and the vibe of the town that everyone would like to have going forward. Preserving the small, friendly town feel was at the top of the list. Maintaining portions of the town focused on permanent residents as well as providing for future growth was, was addressed. Never was a zoning change discussed. The town representative at that meeting, who I don't remember who that was, said that the zoning cannot be changed. Variances could be applied for and issued, but there was an established process for that, and it provided a means for controlled, sensible growth. This new small lot amendment is proposing substantial change to the type of homes built in the R4 zone parcels of land, and eliminates the need for variances. It also eliminates the opportunity for the neighboring permanent residences of, residents of the town to have any say in what will be built. It even seems that all the planning will be conducted with no transparency to the townspeople. We'll know that something is being built when we hear the bulldozers, and we will know what's being built when it's being put up. I'm very uncomfortable living in an information vacuum when it so greatly affects my neighborhood, our neighborhood. I don't think my neighbors will find this acceptable either. I was told by a town representative, I think the guy's name was Matt, at the Tom's Creek Basin meeting several weeks ago, that this is not a zoning revision, it's an overlay that is a zoning ordinance change. He proceeded to explain to me in a convoluted soliloquy the difference between the two processes, and assured me that this zoning ordinance change is legal, and a zoning change is not. Ultimately, I came to realize that a loophole was found in the laws to legally change the zoning while calling it something else. But if it looks like a duck, if it quacks like a duck, it's a duck. The zoning is being changed, and is that legal? So although I bought my house, my home years ago, I feel that by approving this amendment, I was kind of being duped into a bait-and-switch scheme here. My neighbors and the new Givens Farm Development behind you must also be more than a bit upset, since the ink is barely dry on the mortgage contract they recently signed.
Your time is up, so if you can get to a finish point, that would be great.
Okay. Approving this amendment greatly benefits the developers. They can build whatever they want, that maximizes their profits and income at any moment. And I don't know what other loopholes we may be presented once they start building. I don't understand the benefit to the town. I don't understand the benefit to the current town residents directly, directly affected by this.
Thank you.
There's nothing wrong with the existing process. Please don't approve this amendment to change the zoning. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else who would like to speak during this public comment period?
Jabatur Mijad, Blacksburg. Some of you may have seen my comments in the media already. Here are a few key points to consider. Comparing the smaller lots in the village of Tom's Creek with those in an R4 neighborhood, my neighborhood, my neighborhood, it's clear that building smaller homes and the smaller lots can be a more efficient use of land in terms of density. However, based on my calculations, while smaller lot residential development could generate additional revenue, its impact on affordability is likely much smaller than commonly assumed. For instance, a homeowner in my area would need to add about $70,000 to the sale price of their current home in order to purchase one of the 3.5 times smaller properties in the village of Tom's Creek. This brings us to the issue of creating profitable two acre contiguous lots elsewhere in the R4 zoning. While this can already occur, I'd be happy to point out examples where it's possible. The near term market trends suggest this will become more likely in the future. A further concern is the town's seemingly misleading assertion about amendments' impact on density. It remains unclear how the town defines a gentle increase in density when the amendment could result in a density increase of two to three times or more compared to current levels. This discrepancy is significant, and while it may appeal to developers, it raises the crucial question, is such rapid growth truly sustainable for the town? As I have mentioned elsewhere, I'm not opposed to smaller lots, smaller homes, even if they aren't affordable, as long as they are built in suitable areas with the necessary infrastructure to support them. If the primary goal is to create missing middle housing, existing mechanisms within planned residential zoning could already achieve this effectively. My primary concern, aside from the environmental impact of this zoning amendment, is the lack of genuine residents' involvement in the decision-making process before development begins. The proposed amendment clearly favors developers and could fundamentally alter the character of Blacksburg. Here are questions. Will these homes be monitored for energy-
You're getting to the end of your time, too, so-
I'm getting there, yes. Will these homes be monitored for energy efficiency and sustainability as required in some PRD zoning developments? Two, since these neighborhoods are built by right, does that mean the town will ensure the necessary infrastructure? And third, how does the town define contiguous when a property is bisected by a street?
Thank you. Who else would like to speak to this ordinance?
What up, Town Council? My name is Zachary Weiss. I live at 1711 Whipple Drive. I want to make sure that I'm just like suggesting some perennial added regulations to this change to the ordinance, because right now, the residential R4 zoning district doesn't have like a requirement for native landscaping. So I would, if, you know, we're just gonna change the zoning, I've actually been interested in changing the R4 zoning ever since I realized that. I couldn't live with more than four people in my apartment for three years, so I've learned a little bit about zoning since then. So I'm just gonna read out what CHGPT told me. So, Section 3043, I would like to just suggest this. So, it's the native landscaping requirements. The purpose: to encourage the use of native perennial crops and plants on residential properties within the R4 district. This would enhance biodiversity, reducing water use, and supporting pollinators and local ecosystems. So landscaping requirements, I suggest that the developers would need to allocate a minimum of 15% of the area not occupied by structures, driveways, or parking for native perennial crops or plantings. This area must be dedicated to vegetation that's composed of native, non-invasive perennial species adapted to the regional climate, supports local wildlife, including pollinators, and provides soil and water conservation benefits. The plant selection, so property owners may select a native plant species from approved lists provided by the Town's Department of Environmental Resources or any similar organizations. At least 70% of the plants in the designated area should be perennials to promote year-round soil coverage and reduce seasonal replanting. Maintenance: native perennial plantings must be maintained in a healthy condition. Minimal irrigation is permitted only for establishment purposes, with preferences for low-impact maintenance practices that reduce chemical use and avoid synthetic fertilizers. I often see some residents spraying chemical fertilizers or herbicides, right, like maybe two or three blocks over from just a drain, like a local drainage area. So we want to make sure that people are incentivized to not use those types of things. Some exemptions should be like site-specific. So say there's a parking lot, you can't really plant perennial plants there unless you break up the earth. Other exemptions could be if the owner can prove that the existing flora on the property is already matching these requirements. But I think it's very important that every time that you look at the ordinances, that you're considering at least some sort of regulation for native plants, encouraging people to learn more about the ecosystem, and get people to, I don't know, see more plants in their life, and actually understand that we rely on them more than we know. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak to Ordinance 2061? Nope. 2060, 2053. No?
Eric Bissy, 115 North Main Street. So 40 years ago, this town council made decisions that shaped the future of our town here. And that decision was not to annex the mall, because they wanted to stay a small town. I feel that the city council has done everything to reverse that. We are no longer a small town. We are no longer cozy where we know our neighbors. We're cramming more and more and more people into this town. And I don't think that people want that to happen. I think people want to stay with the way things are, and that we don't want to live on top of each other. We don't want these large developments. We don't want small little lots. You know, all that does is bring even more traffic to town. We don't have the infrastructure for that. I was going through some old notes, and I found it interesting. Someone said that it was our job to house Virginia Tech students, and it is not this town's responsibility to do that. Virginia Tech needs to quit growing. This town needs to quit growing. We need to stop growing to a point where we don't want to be. And I think we've reached that point. And you're talking, you know, you look at population density maps, and we're worse than Roanoke in some areas. And do you want to be Roanoke? I sure don't. You know, do you want to be Northern Virginia? Most definitely not. That's why people live here, because we don't want to be like those areas. And everything you're talking about is making us just like those areas. You know, you're talking to affordable housing. We have affordable housing. It's called Christiansburg. You know, let's be honest, not everyone can afford to live where they want to live. Otherwise, we'd all be at the beach, right? You know, come on. Let's be honest here. That's why I bought a house up in Craig County, because that's where I could afford. It's not a bad thing. It's the way life is. We buy what we can afford. We live where we can afford. And we need to start realizing that that's the spot that Blacksburg's in right now. So, I'm not for it. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out. Who else would like to speak to Ordinance 2053? Okay, seeing no one, I'll go ahead and close the public comments, and ask what is Council's pleasure on Ordinance 2053?
I move approval of Ordinance 2053.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion?
I guess I can kick off the discussion. I think this is a positive ordinance, and will have a positive impact on the community. It tries to address what's sometimes called missing middle housing. So currently, under our current zoning ordinances in Blacksburg, in the housing market that we have in the town of Blacksburg, it's easy to build large single-family homes on large lots, and then it's easier to build multifamily housing, apartment communities that are usually end up being for students. But it's difficult to do the housing that's in the middle there. So, townhouses, smaller homes on smaller lots, duplexes, other types of housing that can help all sorts of other sectors in our community. And I think that this ordinance tries to address that while also being very thoughtful and addressing potential impacts on the neighborhood and helping to address those sorts of things. We not only have the two acre requirement that prevents this from being used as an infill tool that we talked about earlier, but there's also the occupancy standard of a family plus one or two unrelated folks. And we also get a lot out of this ordinance in terms of amenities and making sure that what's built is actually a community that can come together. So sidewalks required on both sides of the streets.
Speed limits.
Speed limits, yeah, all those sorts of things. There's a lot of community impact that went into, or community feedback that went into developing this ordinance. As I mentioned, there were over 2,000 postcards sent out. I think this will be a huge positive impact on our community, and I'm happy to support it.
Is it possible at this point to ask Larry a quick question? Is it possible to retroactively, if we were to, by the grace of God, all the stars aligned, we're able to get the GA to give us the ability to require percentage of developments be affordable? Can we retroactively make that apply to the small lot ordinance?
You would want to go ahead and amend the zoning ordinance to effect, to actually put that into place, which is not, you know, it's a process, and it doesn't, you know, it's something that's, you know, you want some community input, but it's certainly possible.
I appreciate everyone that came and spoke, and I appreciate my neighbor being here, and I know this directly affects us, because up on North Main, we have one of the last big undeveloped areas up there. I used to have cows that came up to my back fence, and it's all new homes back there now. But when I look at those new homes, and they are smaller lots than mine, they are twice the cost of what I bought my house for 15 years ago. And I know that I wouldn't be able to afford to live in Blacksburg now if I tried to move here now, and I've only been here 15 years. So folks that have been here a long time, we had the, you've had the luxury of being able to buy when homes were more affordable, and that is just not the case now. I think about my kids, you know, going to college, and they will not be able to live here when they come back unless they live in my basement. So I think about a lot of folks that want to be here. I know it feels like our town is growing out of control, but it also means that we have a beautiful place that a lot of people want to be. And I think this is an opportunity to fill that missing middle, and there will be homes on that big green space up by our houses. And it's just whether you want them to be 800 to a million dollar homes, or if you want them to be people that can, you know, afford, middle-income folks that can afford to live there. I am in support of this.
I agree with my colleagues. I have heard and appreciate the input from the citizens. Unfortunately, or fortunately, however you look at it, Virginia Tech is growing. I would love for them not to continue to grow, because it does impact my quality of life, but we don't have the power to make that happen. If you look at a comprehensive plan that was drafted nearly 25 years ago, I'm sure nobody anticipated a national housing shortage. That's what we have now. As far as not building more in Blacksburg, we have 15,000-plus cars that commute into Blacksburg every day. To not build in the town will not solve our traffic problem. We are a growing town. We can't drop the gates down and keep everybody out who wants to move in, nor would I want to do that. I want our school teachers, our police officers, our servers to be able to live in this community. We need tools to make it possible for them to build homes, and this is a tool. It is imperfect, but it is one that we are able to draft within state limits that Commonwealth of Virginia puts on localities. So I am happy to support this ordinance.
Well, I'll go ahead and speak. Since I served on the Planning Commission, I already supported this with my colleagues in July. I think it's fair to say I'm something of the technocrat of the group up here. I get really down in the weeds with the planning and the zoning. You know, in the past year, we approved workforce affordable housing, and then market rate housing development, Glade Spring Crossing. And part of getting that development to go through, there were a lot of variances and changes that we had to approve as far as our development standards. And that caused a lot of heartache and conversations. Most of what we approved made sense and helped inform us with this. This ordinance has been constructed so deliberately and thoughtfully, and with the input of everyone, you know, the intention being, let's make neighborhoods, R4 neighborhoods, just like we have now, but let's make them with smaller lots. Airport Acres in our community is one of the loveliest neighborhoods, and they have a wonderful community. The ones that are cited on this were up in the Roanoke area. That's how development occurred, you know, 40, or 80, 100 years ago, smaller lots, smaller homes. So, you know, that's really what we're trying to do, is kind of getting back, we're recreating what worked before. And the other thing is, the American dream has always been to own your home, and that's becoming increasingly unattainable for so many people. So the alternative to that is a condo or a townhouse. But with condos or townhouses, you share walls, you share a lot, you're a lot closer to every other, your other neighbors, and that has its own issues. I think this is a great opportunity for us to provide the ability for people to own a single-family home in our community. And that's one of many reasons why I will support this.
Thank you.
I come at this from a very personal perspective for the exact reasons that Councilman Ford just mentioned, that I'm the only renter on this council, and I'm probably closer in age to Lauren Sons than I am to, well, anybody else in this room. So if I want to have any hope of owning a home in Blacksburg at some point in the next decade, it's going to be things like the small lot ordinance that make that possible. The home that I'm renting right now on Progress Street would not have been legal to build under our current zoning. It was built in 1942, 43. And so these smaller homes that are more affordable, that a lot of people think of as, you know, quintessential classic Blacksburg, can't be built today. And so as Jerry said, this kind of gets back to the core of what has worked, and what will work for us going forward. I also think it's something of a good start. I think there are things that this is missing that would help to further prioritize that kind of affordable housing, smaller development in our town. I'm certainly not opposed to infill development, and I know this isn't meant to be that. But as, borrow your phrase there, Larry, we're going to stick our toe in this particular pool and see exactly how hot the water is. But hopefully, this is something that we come back to in the future, revisit, and find ways to rework, such that other sections of town can share in this kind of new old way of doing things.
Susan, do you want to add anything?
I support this ordinance. There are, as Susan pointed out, many, many, many more people who drive into Blacksburg, commute into Blacksburg every day, who would love to live here. They would like to walk to work or be able to bicycle to work. They'd like to be able to use our trails. They'd like to be able to walk down to the Lyric or the Public Library, and they just can't afford to do that. So I think that Blacksburg shouldn't become an elitist community. I think that we need to be a community for all people. And this is only one segment of our population that we're hoping to help, but it is one segment of our population and our economic folks that we're trying to help. It may not do anything for our seniors who need housing. It may not do much for the folks who are our workforce housing needers, but it will help some people be able to afford to live in Blacksburg and have a better life, because they don't have such a long commute. And so again- again, I strongly support this.
Thank you. I don't have a lot to add because I think my colleagues have said it all very well. But I share the sadness that a lot of our, the sadness and the concerns that a lot of our citizens have shared with us. I've been here for almost 45 years, and there's been enormous changes. And some of them have been terrific, and the most recent have been unwelcome, and most of us feel that way. There are, the majority of our residents work or are associated with Virginia Tech in some way. I think those people who work there probably have more influence than this town council about trying to get to the decision-makers on that campus. But no one in this group of people here tonight seems to have any influence about how much they're going to grow. And they've added about 5,000 students in a short amount of time. It was very unwise, and we are not able to absorb that amount of traffic. And I have written newspaper commentaries about it, and I spoke to President Sands about it just last week, and we are in a kind of dialogue called the Partnership for Progress. And I am afraid it will be progress towards more growth. Nobody appreciates that who came here and learned to love it. But this is where we are, and being unhappy with that reality does not relieve us of the responsibility for addressing it usefully. And I would just add, apart from Virginia Tech, which will always be the 800-pound gorilla, this area has been mapped and cited and is clearly a climate refuge. So if you took away the influence of Virginia Tech tomorrow, we would still be a climate refuge, and people will still be looking to us as a place to live. And we don't build medieval cities anymore. We can't just make a wall and hope that nobody's going to cross it. So I'm also in favor. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Hager Smith?
Aye.
Mattingly?
Aye.
Seton?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Moving on to ordinance 2064, an ordinance to amend Town Code Sections 22-221 and 22-222, pertaining to tax exemptions for elderly and disabled by increasing income and asset limits. And Steve Ross will give the staff presentation.
So as you mentioned, this ordinance is to provide a tax relief for elderly and disabled members of our community. This is something that we've done for a number of years, both with Christiansburg and the county, try to coordinate our efforts. As you can see, there's criteria for eligibility that per state code, one being an age limit or disability, maximum income levels, and a net financial worth. Any citizen that applies to the town or the county will receive the benefit if they qualify, and we coordinate the effort. So if you go to the county, they'll let us know. If you come to us, we'll let the county know. Right now, you can see from the slide, there's about 29 people that are currently benefit from this, you know, tax relief. And people are aware of it through different means of communications that we have, as well as being information on the tax bill. So here's the changes that are being proposed. The county's already made these changes, voted on these changes earlier this year, last month, to be effective on January 1st. So you can see the income levels would increase and would range from 45,000 to 70,000, depending on what percent of relief you qualify for based on your income. And then the financial worth was increased by $5,000. As I mentioned, Montgomery County voted on the 15th of October to make these changes. The last changes were made at the beginning of this year, effective January 1 of 2024, and this is being proposed effective January 1, 2025. If you have any questions, I'd be welcome to ask them.
Does the, when calculating net worth, does that include the value of their house, or is that just financial net worth?
That house is taken out of that equation.
For no reason at all, I'd love to see the age limit lowered to 25.
Talk to your legislators.
Thank you. We are open to public comment on ordinance 2064. Seeing no one, what is council's pleasure on ordinance 2064?
I move for approval of ordinance 2064.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there discussion? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mattingly?
Aye.
Seton?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Hager Smith?
Aye. Moving on to ordinance 2065, authorizing the lease of certain space at the Town Transit Center located on the Virginia Tech campus.
You need to read your disqualification statement.
Oh, yeah. I've been saving it up. I think that this statement is going to take longer than the passage of the ordinance. I have a statement of complete disqualification. This is a declaration of interest with respect to transactions in which members of the town council may not participate in accordance with Virginia Code 2.2-3107. This declaration is made with respect to those contracts in which a member of the town council may not participate at all by virtue of law or by reason of his or her choice. The Virginia State and Local Government Conflict of Interest Act requires that I make disclosure to be recorded in the county records in any case in which I am forbidden or choose not to participate. Therefore, I make the following disclosure. The contract involved is the lease of certain space at the Town Transit Center to Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University at 800 Drillfield Drive, Blacksburg, 24061. And my personal interest affected by this contract is that my spouse's employment is with Virginia Polytechnic Institute and State University. And he has also tried to get them to stop growing without success. I affirmatively state that I will not vote or in any manner act on behalf of the town council in this matter.
All right. Well, I have the staff report, and it will be brief, and I don't have PowerPoint. This is a project that's 20 years in the making. It is the new transit center on Virginia Tech campus, where a large part of it are new bus loops, kind of that have turned out to be a very successful way to get the buses out of, in front of Burris Hall. And with it, there is a building that is the Transit Center Building, two-story, and what's being leased is space in that building to Virginia Tech for some of their transit-oriented programs. It's always been kind of baked in this arrangement, this unusual arrangement where the town of Blacksburg is building a transportation facility on the Virginia Tech campus. And the ordinance, an ordinance is required for leases of this nature. The ordinance authorizes the lease for the spaces that are set out in the ordinance. It's a 40-year term with nominal rent, and that is all I have.
Thank you. Would members of the public like to speak to ordinance 2065? Okay, going, going, gone. What is council's pleasure on ordinance 2065?
I move approval of ordinance 2065.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have discussion? Okay. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Seton?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Oliver?
Aye.
Ford?
Aye.
Mattingly? Mattingly?
Aye.
Yeah, okay. Okay, thank you for all that. Moving on to citizen comments.
So, yes, thank you. My name is Nancy Lowery. I live on Hutcheson Drive in McBride Village. My backyard shares the property line with Tremont Estates Parking Lot. There's been a chronic noise ordinance violation with townhouse 901 on Lower Lane at the very end. Since August, there have been at least a dozen times, they've had a party from approximately 10:00 PM to 3:00 AM with speakers set up outside and a subwoofer blaring. And the subwoofer bass is so loud that my house even shakes. My situation is such that my son has a medical condition in which he has hyperacusis. It's the most severe form of tinnitus, so the noise is excruciatingly painful for him. The first five or six times, we tried to ignore it. So after that, I started phoning the police. The noise never stopped. I contacted Townside Property Management, the ones responsible for the units, specifically spoke both in person, via email, and by phone with John Byers, who is in charge of managing the townhouses. He has responded, and I have printed out his email, that it is out of his jurisdiction of control, whatever that means. I've searched the records, and I've located the names of the landowners, of the landlords, but I have no contact info for phone number or address, so no way to reach them. The worst of the noise came on both Friday and Saturday nights of homecoming weekend, no surprise, where the speakers blared from 10:00 PM to 3:00 AM. So by Sunday, severe sleep deprivation. I have called the police at least six of the 12 times this has occurred with no results. On October 19, at 1:00 AM, the day of the homecoming game, I finally asked to speak with the police supervisor. He told me this, and it was very disconcerting. He only had five officers on patrol duty that night, and he told me the priority was for possible loss of life due to inebriated driving, drunken altercations, and that they already had 35 noise ordinance violation complaints. He said the earliest he could send an officer would be at 4:00 or 5:00 AM, by which time the parties are usually over and is too late. So my question to the council is this. I'm concerned, is the police force short-staffed or underbudgeted? It seems that five officers on homecoming night, when we're inundated with people from out of town, there's having to be drinking, partying, seems insufficient. My second question is, what do you think I can do? Because we have run out of options. We have done basically everything. And these students, they're not going to change with a little slap on the wrist and a warning. They do need citations, you know, where it costs them some money. But we can't get officers out there at that peak time. So, and I would go over there myself, but I hear a lot of males yelling, fighting, and, you know, I don't want to get hurt. So my son has gotten to the point where he's almost suicidal, so I'm really quite worried. So thank you.
Can I ask the manager who will work with her?
How about Matt? Give you your information. Matt, he'll work with the police department.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. I'm sorry. Is there anyone else who would like to speak?
Evening, town council. My name is Matt Wright. I live at 507 Monovista Drive here in Blacksburg. I have three kids, 13, 10, and 6, and they participate in various activities and programs throughout the year. Tonight, I'm coming here as an advocate for all the children of our community regarding the recreational apartment programs in our facilities. I had the pleasure of meeting with this caller a few weeks ago and to discuss some of these issues, and she kind of caught me off guard by asking for three positives right off the bat. I really liked that, and I've encouraged the rest of the parents here tonight to bring some of that positive success stories. So my three positives are the willingness of the rec and town officials to engage and accept feedback has been very good. The projected movement of some of that feedback, although they were still just ideas, has also been good. The field condition for my son's baseball team at his end-of-year celebration was on a field behind the Aquatic Center. It was lit, it was well-maintained, there was a sign reserving it. Everybody had a great time. That should be the standard and not the exception. If you were to reference the 2008 to 28 Parks and Recreation Master Plan, it lists several objectives under the athletic programs. My question is, what is the accountability of these objectives? If that accountability is the reality of our situation, then we are not meeting these objectives at our community. Why and what can we do? I was asked to bring a specific point by one coach and parent. He's also a business owner, and part of that is objectives are partnerships through the town, sponsorship. He's never been asked, do we have a department that goes out to that community outreach? Also in this master plan is a chart that shows percentage of citizens by age. Those 18 and under are by far the lowest percentage. But that does not mean we should be leaving them behind. A phrase you may hear more than once is children are protected class. I believe your socioeconomic status should not determine your ability to participate in town programs and the sports. Unfortunately, I think that we're often experiencing that in our town. So I respectfully ask the members of this council, can you help? It is not lost on us as parents the challenges of managing our budget. The needs and requests far outweigh the fiscal reality. We understand that. Can you prioritize this community's children? A town employee has stated in one conversation, the standard of facilities has risen. Whether you visit surrounding municipalities or drive down 81, we are not keeping up with that standard. Having the pleasure of residing in Blacksburg, where our status more often than exceeds the standard of living from surrounding communities, I'm curious why we're behind in this area. Are you willing, as the gatekeepers of our capital and overseers of our programs, to revisit and analyze our recreation opportunities and processes for our children from top to bottom? Can you address these shortfalls? Can we bring our current fields up to standard? Can we maintain that standard? And at the same time, can we prepare and execute for the growth in new opportunities? I'd ask you, how can I help as a parent, as a coach, as a volunteer? Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name's Chris McDowell. I'm at 1213 Cedar Orchard Drive. I'm also here as a parent. My wife and I are raising two children in the Blacksburg community. My youngest is, has used the recreational sports extensively. He, when we moved here, moved back from me, everybody else moved here, in 2016, he played baseball every season he was eligible to, until he aged out of Cal Ripken last year at 12. He also played a couple of seasons of soccer, but baseball is his passion. When we moved here, baseball was run by a third-party, as soccer is currently, right? Both used the town facilities extensively, and I'm thankful for the town. Back to what Matt said, there's a lot of positives. I'm thankful that the town took baseball over when the third-party kind of collapsed. I think that's where it belongs. That's sustainable for us to have it run by the Parks and Rec. And it was, it's been a great experience for us. But as he progressed, several gaps appeared in the program. The one I want to address is about the facilities. Kipps Field in particular has not been well-maintained, number one, in terms of groundskeeping, which can be a safety hazard, right, for baseball. It's a hard ball flying around, but also developmental for their baseball skills if the only ground ball you learn to field is one that bounces in odd directions. Similar issues exist at Old Blacksburg High School, which is where he plays most of the time now as a member of the middle school team. Number two issue for me is availability of the fields. Part of that is due to lighting. We run out of time in the winter and in the fall, and drainage, that we tend to have more rain cancellations than our peers in the area. So these happen less frequently because of the more modern facilities and focus on maintenance. Once again, Matt addressed the 2008, the 20-year plan that came out in 2008. A lot of these issues were addressed in there, including capacity and maybe some new fields. But as far as I can see, there has not been a lot of progress on that plan. So I'd like to encourage the town to work on funding to improve groundskeeping at our current fields. Look at funding the facilities identified in that 2008 plan. Commission an overall improvement plan for the existing youth sports facilities so we can use them to their full extent. And once again, as Matt said, give me and other parents and advocate a way to help. So if it's workdays, if it's fundraising, some of our neighbors have been able to use, to get some grants to help out. So, yeah, I love living in this town and thankful for everything it brings. I think it's a facilities... I think it's a facilities issue too, as we, as we grow, as we talked about, right? Not just traffic, but also places for our kids to have fun and enjoy sports. So, I guess my time is up, so thank you.
Thank you.
Davis Robertson, 95 Charleston Lane. Good evening, council members. I was born and raised in Blacksburg. I'm a social studies teacher at Blacksburg High School, as a coach of football there as well, and I'm the head middle school baseball coach. I'm here to speak regarding why I believe that youth athletics are important and how I believe that we can improve. When I was growing up in this town, there were roughly four baseball teams, 10 basketball teams, and three football teams per age group, and these rec teams allowed my peers and I to develop our skills and learn what it meant to be a team player. Because of my experiences in youth athletics, I learned irreplaceable skills such as a strong work ethic, selflessness, and teamwork. I've earned a number of things from my experience in youth athletics in this community. My trip to the Dixie World Series at 11 years old was nice. I don't think about it every day. The state championship ring that I won in 2016 is nice, but it comes out of my drawer once or twice a year. Getting the entirety of my college paid for on an athletic scholarship was nice, but those days are behind me. So, what sticks with me? A strong work ethic, a selfless attitude, and the willingness to be a team player in my workplace and in my community. I want the kids in our town to have similar experiences to me. However, our participation numbers are way down. I want to highlight two main concerns with you. Well, one is the administration of youth camps, and the second is field maintenance. I have specifics about my experience as a summer camp lead in the town of Blacksburg that I've shared with individuals that work in the town. I'm not going to go into great detail with those, but I would say that I think that with better preparation for those youth camps and additional resources, there would be a better product, which would in turn give us more participation in actual athletic seasons. I've raised many concerns with the town over field maintenance. For now, I'm only going to discuss the maintenance of the lower Kips Field, which we use for middle school, as well as the old BHS Field. As a middle school baseball coach, despite numerous requests made to have the field dragged on a consistent basis for safety concerns, it was not. An undragged field obviously presents many safety concerns. Therefore, I spent roughly 45 minutes of my planning period each day before practice dragging that field and making up that planning time later in the, which once again, trying to be part of the solution, not part of the problem. And the mound at old BHS and the batter's box both have huge craters in them. I asked on multiple occasions to have clay placed in them. It was postponed over multiple weeks before we played multiple games, presenting safety concerns there as well. My greatest concern obviously centers around player safety, and if we make that a priority for ourselves, I think participation can increase. I believe that if we allocate the necessary resources into the structure of our youth camps and our field maintenance, we can increase our involvement in youth athletics. I love winning games. I would love to see the kids that I currently coach win a state championship one day, and I'd love to see each one of them earn a scholarship as well. But most of all, I want to see our next generation grow into adults who are team players, who have selfless attitudes, and have a great work ethic. If we invest in them, they will become outstanding members of our community, and our return on investment will be high. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Eric Johnson. I live at 1510 Nicholas Way, and I've been a resident of Blacksburg for 32 years. One of those guys that came here to Virginia Tech and never left. This is a wonderful place to live, and my wife and I have raised our two children, are 13 and 10 years old, and they have participated in Blacksburg rec sports, among other school-related sports activities, for at least the last eight years. First, I want to talk about our existing footprint of fields that we have. We actually have decent amount of fields. So I'm not asking from a standpoint that we need to add more facilities, more properties. What I'm asking for is the facilities that we have, that they're taken care of properly. While facilities in Christiansburg, like their Hark Raider, or their new Huckleberry Field, or what Salem has, their Moyer Complex, their Kiwanis Complex, they're very nice and very attractive, but they also participate in sports tourism, athletic tourism. And that's not really been part of Blacksburg's focus, and I don't know that it's necessary that it is part of Blacksburg focus from that standpoint. The other concern I have is accessibility to fields, particularly practice for other teams. The rec sports get their priority, and I appreciate that. And my younger son participates with the New River United, Virginia United Soccer Club, and I know many of the soccer facilities here in Blacksburg are rented by that organization, and they find a field anywhere and everywhere just to let those kids get their training in. But particularly today, I wanted to talk more about the baseball and softball field access. I find it troubling that Virginia Tech's club baseball team has priority to access the only full-size baseball field that we have in Blacksburg right now, which is the old Blacksburg High School team. In addition to playing rec sports, both of my sons play travel baseball and have, and despite having the majority of Blacksburg residents on some of those teams, they're given second priority behind a team that has no full-time Blacksburg residents to it. I tried and tried to rent field time, being told again and again that the Virginia Tech club team has it. Without lights, field accessibility is definitely limited to daylight hours, and our full-time residents are treated as second-class citizens, or sometimes temporary student residents. I am a twice Virginia Tech alum. I'm a varsity letter winner from Virginia Tech. I'm a fan, I'm an adjunct professor at Virginia Tech. I have a deep appreciation for Virginia Tech and what it's done for our community. However, I prioritize my children's needs and cannot understand why a Virginia Tech club team is given priority over our own town's youth. So thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. I'm Jen Lolly, and I have some slides for this evening. I don't know if they are available.
Yeah.
Great. All right. The slides are pretty busy because we have a lot to talk about, and I know I only have three minutes, but what I want to say is, again, I'm Jen Lolly. I'm at 1261 Treetop Bridge in Blacksburg, Virginia. I've been here for a long time. Got my PhD from Virginia Tech. I'm a business owner, a chemist in Giles County, because quite frankly, it was a little too expensive to do business here. But what I'm here to give you is a mom's perspective on recreation sports in Blacksburg. And what I want to start with is just a comment by asking you if you've ever heard the comment, "when God blesses you, he rarely has you in mind." And I'm saying that because I know that all of the things that all of the parents are here asking, we know that this is probably not going to affect or benefit us, or the photos I take, or our children. But what we are asking is that we do a little bit more to support the kids and to show them that you support them. The positive is that the pictures that you'll see here, the smiles from these children are, I mean, it's priceless. They are happy after losing games. The coaching staff here is incredible, but I will tell you, you are losing coaching staff based on the things that you're hearing tonight. The three things that I'm asking of you as a mom is, first of all, how can I help? I write proposals for a living, so I know how to raise money, I know how to, you know, look for grants. So what I wanted to show you briefly in these three slides is, first, we've got uneven, unkept fields that we talked about, the safety issues. Balls, you know, flying, hitting kids in the face. One of the most egregious things I've seen, though, has been in the Kips Field, the back left center field, there was an uncovered drain. That's the same type of unkept field that led to Mickey Mantle's life-altering injury. With something like that, we're just, again, asking for better upkeep, better maintenance, just prioritizing safety of the children. So that's, that's a big ask. When you enter fields like Tom's Creek, the first thing that you might think is that it's charming. It's unkempt. You've got the flowing grass. It's messy. That's the view that other people have coming in. And they usually say, "Well, this is Blacksburg. It's bougie. You know, why don't you have the things that the neighboring towns have?" That's not what we are here asking you tonight. We're not asking for the $27 million sports complex that's in Salem. Can I get to the next slide? What we are asking for is, my son's up there on the football team, best experience, Blacksburg Field, look at the lights, I mean, it's beautiful. I've watched the kids practice countless times in the dark in different fields. I've watched the kids practice in the rain, and I can't tell you how many times we show up to a practice and we're having to drag and rake the fields trying, you know, to get the kids to practice out there in the rain, getting the fields prepared. The third thing that I'll mention is, I've got a quote there from one of the parents. I have countless quotes from parents asking for different improvements, small improvements. And as a scientist, I know that there are two numbers that are big, zero and 100. When you have a metric of 100, it's important. And I have been out there to take thousands of pictures of the kids, hundreds of discussions with parents. Every parent has some improvement or want that we are here asking for. Third slide? So finally, again, what I want to bring up is, again, we're not asking for the sports complex shown there with my son's travel baseball team. Beautiful facility, they have unbelievable batting cages, but what I am saying is, in the small town of Newport, they have a gorgeous covered batting range, or batting cage, really beautiful. And I looked at their website, they were able to work on, in a way to achieve funding through grants. I don't know anything about this. I'm a chemist. I'm a mom. I'm just here kind of voicing the opinions that I've got and the conversations that we all have in the fields. We all want better for our children. I'm here because I love my kids. We were told for 10 years that we couldn't have children, so you better believe that I'm there at every game, every practice. I love the town and just want to know how we can help.
Thank you.
My name's Mike Jackson. I live at 1421 Pebble Beach Road. I've been a member of Blacksburg's community for about 25 years. The last eight to 10 years, I've been involved in youth athletics as a, as a coach, whether it be starting out at T-ball, baseball, basketball, softball. The last two years, I've been the head football coach of our, of our junior program, which is our fourth and fifth grade. So a lot of new, new players for, you know, the first time playing football. Just to give the council some context, the sport of football is very process-oriented. If you look at what we're doing compared to what Zach Leonard at the varsity program's doing, to Brent Pryor at Tech, obviously, the level of frequency and sophistication is much different, but the way the process works as you prepare for game to game is a couple of practices, you do a walkthrough, you play the game. You've heard a lot about our facilities or lack thereof this evening. I just wanted to give you some context on how that impacts our, our young people learning the sport of football. Unfortunately, because we don't have a dedicated football facility like a lot of communities do, and all it is is a field that you would line and throw out some, some yardage markers, we have to, you know, deal with resource constraints at the high school. But the schedule that was presented to us this year is, we had five games in 13 days, which if you think and you compare to obviously what's happened at Tech or at Blacksburg High School, but probably more importantly, look at what's going on in other communities, we averaged about a game every three days, which is incredibly difficult on the kids, certainly on the coaches, certainly on the parents. But if you look at other communities, they're averaging a game every six to seven days, which, you know, certainly the kids want to be competitive, but we really take a step back and, you know, my view on this from being involved in youth athletics is, do the kid have fun? Do the player have fun? Do they get better? Do they come back next year? Being asked to kind of go through that sequence of scheduling, just the, the amount of, how quick everything happens, I would say the three goals we had for that team were not met because of the kind of the schedule that we had. Really, my ask to the council is, certainly, this is one of awareness. Certainly, I'm echoing other, 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 other members of our communities' feelings on this, and something to just be mindful of as, you know, initiatives and asks and requests come from the Parks and Rec Department, that, hey, yeah, we, let's, we can probably do a better job here moving forward. So appreciate the time and thank you all for what you do for the, for the town.
Thank you.
My name's Steve Watkins. I live at 1620 St. Andrew's Circle. So I'm here as a teacher in this community, as a coach for years now, and also as a parent. I have three children who, you know, well, to back up a little bit, I first came to this town in 1995 as a freshman at Virginia Tech and fell in love with the place and have been here since. My three children have all, you know, starting about 15 years ago, participated in rec sports with basketball, volleyball, and a lot with softball with my two daughters. And I've coached basketball and a lot of softball. So, and I also coached Blacksburg Middle School as the head coach of the softball team for the past two years, and I helped with a local Lady Hornets travel team. So I've spent a lot of time at, at Kips and a lot of time at the various other facilities we have around town. And I've seen a lot of them in the region, and with my daughters playing travel sports, I see them, you know, in other states and all over. But the main thing I want to talk about is, is the excitement, just the excitement that these, that these young athletes have for the game, and it's something that, you know, really makes me love coaching. So, and, you know, they get excited about practice, about new uniforms, about games, and being nervous and being together for the games, but they also get excited when they see a field that's properly maintained and has the lines set up for them, and a nice dugout, and a batting cage that's, you know, ready for them to safely take reps. You know, so sometimes when they go to these other facilities, they'll see these things and get, you know, and kind of sometimes ask questions about that, you know? So, and we just have to make do with, with what we have oftentimes. So what I want to see is just more excitement from these kids, which translates to the parents and to the coaches, and makes it better for everybody. So I want to see it, excitement because the field's ready, because there's a bullpen there for the pitchers to warm up and safely prep for the games. To have batting cages that are maintained and have pitching screens that are safe for the coaches. Excitement because they can see their parents cheering for them in stands that are nice and comfortable for their parents and not just kind of strewn about the hillside, you know? So, and I want the parents and the coaches to have more excitement as well because their kids are safe, because it's not a burden to coach or to be involved, because it's something that they want to do, because they know they're supported, and they know they have the facilities that can support them. So this excitement is really what I think makes the youth sports grow, because as mentioned, it's a problem right now with, you know, the lack of engagement and recruitment of people to play. And it shows. It shows at the middle school, it shows at the high school. So, and I think, once these young athletes get excited, they tell their friends. They tell their parents how much fun they have. Their parents talk to other parents and tell them they should get involved. And that's the kind of excitement I want to get. And it also makes the coaches want to stay involved, makes the parents want to coach, when they know they have support and they know they have other coaches and people they can learn from. So that's what I'm really just asking of you, is that you just be a part of developing this excitement by supporting the improvement of facilities and the maintenance of facilities. So I just want to, with your help, make this exciting for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Town Council. Jesse Helmandollar, 1326 Mockingbird Drive, Blacksburg. My wife and I have been here going on 25 years. Tech grads, decided to stick around, whole deal. We have two young boys. I have just counted up, been a volunteer coach for the rec programs going on five different sports over 16 separate seasons, so good amount of experience. You've heard the talking points from a lot of the youth sports advocates. I'm going to highlight two basic things, just to get a little, a little bit deeper into the 2008 Parks and Rec Master Plan, which was first drafted in 2004, come up in 20 years, the top four priorities and, and, you know, in order. Number one, the Community Rec Center. Obviously, you know, there's the town, there's the county, we understand that. That was the number one priority. Number two, athletic fields. Number three, active park amenities. So basically, supporting the athletic fields, dugouts, parking, things like that. And then number four, the trail systems. Love the trail systems, have nothing against the trail systems. Looking at where the money goes as far as, and I'm, I'm kind of new to this, as a lot of us are, as far as especially the CIP, you know, money. It looks like a disproportionate amount of the money that's going, you know, to the Parks and Rec specific items, are going to the passive parklands, not necessarily to the active parkland, specifically athletic fields, support for that. So I would highly recommend, you know, that we look into that, see what we can do. Is this something that, you know, talking about the safety concerns, you know, number one, like the immediate concerns, things need to have, happen, you know, before we can continue to play. Working with you all, what do we need to do to get, you know, money in the annual budget for things like, every year, we probably need to laser level the fields, we need to bring dirt in so that we don't get in the situation we're in currently, and also some of these bigger ticket items, right? Lights, you know, Eric talked about, we probably do have the Lights, you know, Eric talked about, we probably do have the right amount of fields. We're not asking for more fields or even anything great, but, you know, the infrastructure there to help support, that way our, our kids can practice, we don't have to deal with, you know, just cleaning things up. And then the second point I want you to consider is, as you consider the strategic investment and infrastructure for youth sports, one main thing would be, we're not just investing in the facilities, but the future of our children, particularly those from underserved and underprivileged backgrounds. What happens is you have youth sports advocates who get frustrated, "We're, we're going to do the best thing for our kids." That goes into the private sector, that goes in the clubs, we're losing out on good coaches. So, if our local government does not prioritize youth sports, we're going to continue to be drawn to these private clubs, things like that. So we've raised awareness. Matt Handratty has been great, Lauren's been great, even Dean Crane, we spoke with him. It seems like everybody's on board here. We're trying to not come, you know, at you with, with pitchforks and say, "Hey, you know, you know, we need some change," but as we're asking you, hopefully, there's, there's some awareness, what can we do as a community? What can we do as the local youth sports advocates? So, in closing, we urge you, the council, to see youth sports as a critical investment in the future of our town's children, particularly those from protected classes. By prioritizing diversity and inclusion in our sports programs, we're giving every child, regardless of their background, the opportunity, opportunity to succeed. This is not just an investment in our athletic abilities of our kids, but their future, their sense of belonging, and their mental and physical health. Look forward to working with you guys in the future with this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
What's up, town council? My name's Zachary Weiss. I live at 1711 Whipple Drive, and this is what I'm looking forward to. Attending the Citizens Institute meetings from April to June next year, the full moon, hibernation, frogs hibernate, Thanksgiving, having dinner tonight. I'm looking forward to acquiring my permaculture design certification. I'm looking forward to more honesty in national politics. I'm looking forward to peaceful and diplomatic solutions to conflict abroad. I'm looking forward to, most namely, an arms embargo on Israel. "Made by Khalifa Ibn Raiford Daniels. Despite the actions of the few and excessive retaliation, drones, planes, bombs, tanks, rubble, buildings demolished, vanished houses and neighborhoods, hospitals targeted, UN shelters disrespected, murder, death, deliberate killings of non-combatants, babies buried alive, amputations, hunger and political starvation, lack of or no water, strategic sanitation, daily terror and terrorize daily, military maneuvering, moving here and there to turn back again to nowhere. Trauma with all of its manifestations, international parlays and hesitation, defiance to the realization of two nations, global aid thwarted, global amnesia, citizens and relatives gone forever, parental worries in the face of apex arrogance and ethnic cleansing by any definition. Still, your laughter can be heard and somehow you are able to smile. Oh resilient children of Palestine, children of Palestine, children of Palestine. Made by Khalifa Ibn Raiford Daniels." There have been over 50K non-combatant deaths since over a year ago, and what kind of responsibility do we have? We want to be good people, but do we need to be? And especially the impact of this war on climate, the aerosol dust emissions and planned destruction and sabotage of agricultural and wildlife areas. How do you influence an authority on their choices through a moral, ethical basis? How do you meet the town's needs? I'm looking forward to reading history and remembering the stories of those who won't be forgotten. I'm looking forward to remembering the history that built our global supply chain. Is outsourcing really a good idea? What's wrong with making things here or locally? In lieu of the election, I know you won't let national pressure steal you from local needs and concerns, our livelihoods depend on it. I look forward to every chance to speak at public comment.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak under Citizen Comments? Seeing no one, we will move on to unfinished business. Does council have unfinished business? How about new business?
Just to say that I've, I've played rec sports in this town more recently than the adoption of the most recent master plan. Of course, that stopped after I learned it was more than orange slices and Gatorades, and my brother's the real, you know, rec sports hero in the family. And I remember even then going into the basement at Dean Crane's office to pick out football equipment. We'll be working to, to make sure that you guys get the sort of facilities that you deserve to play on, because I know how important that is, or how that important that was to, to my family, so I can only imagine how important it is to all of yours.
Council announcements.
I have one. The council adopted in the consent agenda another proclamation that I will save everybody at this late hour reading, but it is a proclamation creating a Small Business Week. Everybody knows Small Business Saturday is the Saturday after Black Friday, happens to be a game day in Blacksburg, may not be the best shopping day for our residents. So we have passed a proclamation making November 30th through December 7th Small Business Week. I understand there will also be some free parking involved with that in the downtown area, so please come out and support your local businesses. Local businesses keep the money in our town, they sponsor local youth sports teams, or at least could do so in the future, so get out and do some of your holiday shopping in, out, in some of our local businesses.
And that runs into the holiday parade and all the good stuff at the end of that week, right?
That's right.
So you have even more reason to come downtown.
That's right, the holiday parade is on Friday, the 6th, right in the middle of Small Business Week. Also, that very same night is the Art Walk, that's 5:00 to 8:00 PM downtown Blacksburg. And one thing that's coming up really soon is the Marching Virginians are going to be playing downtown this Saturday, November 16th at 2:30, and I think they're only playing for about 40 minutes, so if you want to see them, definitely show up on time, 2:30 at the outdoor stage on College Avenue. I believe College Avenue will be closed for that period of time, so there'll be plenty, plenty of spaces to, to be out and listen to them. And it's also a good day to start your shopping early if you want to do it.
And, and why are they going to be playing downtown?
I think it's their 50th anniversary. It also happens to be Warmheart's, I think, 50th anniversary this year, so a lot of 50th anniversaries.
Great, thank you. Are those, those, all the announcements? Thank you. In that case, we are adjourned.